I believe we're staff, staff's working in the staff area. Thank you.
Laura, any additional questions from you?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, trustees here. If not, I would entertain a motion. We have two action items under the financials. One is the approval of the 2025 January report and also the January 2025 disbursement report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I move to approve the January 2025 financial report.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, let's do this one at a time. Well, no, we can do it. All in favor of approving the January 2025 financial report and the dispersal approvals for January, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five on the agenda is related to financials. This one is our fiscal 2024 audit presentation and acceptance. We welcome Morgan Browning here as our guest tonight for the presentation of the audit. Something we're all looking forward to.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Browning. I'm the audit director with Harris. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening to present the results of the fiscal year 2024 audit. Do you guys hear me okay?
It's, it's up all the way. Did you flip the button?
Will you try to switch, Morgan, please?
There we go.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Browning. I'm the audit director with Harris. It's a pleasure to be here to present the results of the fiscal year 2024 audit. My plan is to go over our reports that we issue, issue three reports, and go over some financial statement highlights and then open it up to any questions that you have. So, the first report that I'm going to go over is the independent audit report on pages three through five of the audit. The report discusses management's responsibility to prepare these financial statements. They're also responsible for establishing internal controls that are sufficient to detect any misstatements in this report. That's management's responsibility. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion as to whether or not the financials are are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. These are principles set forth by standard setting bodies like the Governmental Accounting Standard Board and Uniform Guide to Reporting. We're also responsible for performing the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. That's our responsibility. So, the opinion that we're rendering for fiscal year 2024 is an unmodified opinion. It's the highest level assurance that you can obtain in an audit. I like to refer to it as clean statement. Congratulations to Emma and her staff for getting a clean opinion on the audit. The second report that I'm going to go over is on pages thirty-four. It's a report that's required by government auditing standards. There's two parts to the report. There's internal controls and there's compliance. Again, management's responsible for internal controls. We're not the controls as auditors. Our responsibility is to understand your internal controls and to perform tests to ensure that controls are implemented. If during the course of our audit, we uncover findings, we look at your internal controls and there's no evidence there, they're not designed, or if we have a lot of corrections in the audit, a lot of adjustments to make, this report will reference findings. We're also in accordance with government auditing standards required to perform tests of compliance with laws, regulations, grants, and contracts. So if we uncover noncompliance through those tests, this report would also reference findings as well. So for fiscal year 2024, I'm pleased to report that there were no internal control findings noted and no noncompliance noted for the district. So, next I'm going to go over some financial statement highlights. If you look on page seven, page seven is your statement of net position. Your net position is really the difference between your total assets minus your liabilities, deferred outflows, and deferred inflows. That number is twenty-one million at the end of September thirtieth, 2024. You can see your assets and deferred outflows are forty-two point nine million. Your liabilities are twelve point one million and your overall net position is twenty-one million. Of that twenty-one million, seven million is tied up in hard assets. I would say capital assets, right-of-use assets. And five point three million is externally restricted for capital projects, leaving you with an unrestricted net position of eight point six million is what I refer to as your liquid net position. Your total assets grew from last year. This year it's forty-two point nine for the statement. Last year it was thirty-three point six million. Your liabilities also grew. This year it's twelve point one million. Last year it was six point three million. The main reason for that increase was the new Pinnacle branch in South Meridian. So, this year you had certificates of participation issued by Zion's and related lease obligations here. So what accounting standards require you to do is to report a right-of-use asset and a lease liability associated with that Pinnacle branch. And so that was six point one million dollars of the increase, which is why your assets and your liabilities increased so much. Moving to the statement of activity, that's on the next page, on page eight. This shows your expenses, your changes in your net position, your revenues during, during the fiscal year. So, you can see that your total revenues, if you add your charges for services, grants, and general revenues, are eleven point one million. So, that's up from ten point five million in the previous year. So the main reason for that increase was an increase in property taxes and investment earnings were higher this year. He has a decrease in grant revenue, but the property taxes and investment earnings eclipse that decrease, so overall increase. Your change in net position, you can see that your net position increased for the prior year by one point seven million dollars. So, the next page on page nine shows your balance sheet for your governmental funds. What I, what I like to highlight here is the general fund fund balance, particularly the unassigned fund balance. So, if you look on page nine, you can see your total fund balance was ten point seven million. Of that, four point two million is unassigned. What I'd like to do is I like to compare that to your total expenditures, which is on page eleven. Your total expenditures for the year was seven point eight million. So you have four point two million unassigned relative to seven point eight eight million. That's about fifty-three percent. What I refer to that as your budgetary cushion, you know, so you're, you're a little north, you're north of fifty percent of your total annual expenditures in terms of your unassigned fund balance. That's a very healthy budgetary cushion, so. It speaks to the district's ability to whether it's more, handle unforeseen expenditures, which is, which is really good. Last year that ratio was fifty-four percent, so it's pretty, pretty constant. You had three point eight million in unassigned fund balance last year, so it's stayed relatively constant over the past two years. Other communications. Again, there are no findings. All adjustments were posted. There were no changes in significant accounting policies, no disagreements or anything like that. So, overall, a very clean audit. Emma and her staff facilitated it really well. And, and I'll open it up to any questions that the board has about the audit.
Thank you, Morgan. Questions from trustees?
Mr. Chair?
Josh, go ahead.
Not, not a question so much as just another kudos to Emma and her team. Just so the public knows, Emma, Emma's team consists of Emma and Mouse in her pocket, I think. But I, I just wanted to make everyone aware that she works really hard, does a fantastic job in coordination with Nick. And there are a lot of moving parts when it comes to the budget that are not readily apparent to the public. Because of the fiscal commitments and things of that nature, it's kind of a shell game. And I just want Morgan to confirm for me that the shell game is working fine. And the trustee bonus of, there's five of us, so that's five million dollars we need to embezzle at some point. I'm totally joking. Some people will think that we're paid, you know, or something like that, or we're doing this to get rich. That's not the case. But it's good to have an outside source reinforce the fact that Emma's doing a fantastic job, taking compliance with all accounting laws and regulations, and run a good course for the future.
That's great. I'll confirm that. If I stay away from Mark, I can double it to shell game, but just kidding. No, no worries.
Mr. Chair, trustee Cummings. Effective October first of 2024, we do have a admin assistant that works primarily around finance-related topics and does a fantastic job expediting things greatly in our departments. We're thankful for her.
Please thank her in our behalf. Morgan wants to example of a hard asset from my non-financial.
Furniture fixture, like the, the construction costs associated with the Pinnacle branch, the building, that, that sort of thing, so equipment. Those are assets on your, on your balance sheet. They get appreciated over time, so there's an appreciation expense. So they stay on your balance sheet and they, they factor into your net position. So when you look at your equity, you know, you say how much of that is liquid and how much of that is non-liquid and you kind of, you want to, you want to distinguish between hard assets and liquid assets. That's, that's kind of what I'm referring to when I was referring to hard assets.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind the audience that this room is rather small and the side conversations are very readily heard by all in the room. So if we could maintain some decorum to allow the board to conduct their business, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Morgan, thank you.
You're welcome.
So our action item regarding this audit tonight, we entertain a motion. We need to approve the fiscal year 2024 audit presentation as is listed in our packet here and as presented for.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Laura.
I move to approve the audit presentation.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is item number six, the Pinnacle update staff presentation. We'll turn it over to Dusty. Welcome. Do you get up here very often? Are you all in South Meridian these days?
Mostly in South Meridian.
Okay, thanks for coming.
The last time that I was here was giving the Pinnacle update for our opening. So it was about a week and a half before we opened. We've been open almost six months, so I wanted to come and talk about all the great things that we've been doing. So patron visits. The first month there, October, does represent also September thirtieth, which was our grand opening. I put that over on the site. Thirteen hundred people came in the doors that one day, which was more than I was used to at Silverstone where we closed. Total for, and this is through about the first week of March, because we're still in March. Total, since then, we've had over twenty-seven hundred people walk through the door. Which, so I did put some highlights comparing the same time period from Silverstone to Pinnacle, just to give the board some ideas of how much we've increased. The months of December and February, we had about a week that our patron counter wasn't working. So those numbers are a little lower because the technology was broken. But still, still higher than we had at Pinnacle, or at Silverstone. For circulation, we've also increased. I've got the totals for checkout renewals and then just kind of the total combined. So we have circulated fifty-six hundred items at Pinnacle compared to forty-one hundred, or forty-one thousand, sorry, at Silverstone for that same time period. And then that, that green is that the actual total, including the renewals, which is eighty-two thousand versus seventy-one thousand. So a little over ten thousand more items have gone through the doors in approximately five and a half months. And then just breaking it down as a percentage of for the district. The little yellow is, I don't even have a number there. It's right around a one percent. And that would be unbound operations and Tiny Library all combined. So it doesn't even have a label. That's about one percent of our circulation. But I did include all of our full-service branches plus home delivery to give you some ideas of what percentages those are. For the same time period last year, Orchard Park stayed right around the same. Cherry Lane actually went down this year compared to last year, and we picked up pretty much that same percentage. So I think we just kind of picked up some of that crowd that was moving to Cherry Lane. So it's not all great news. We have had a lot of great things happening at Pinnacle, but because we're located so close to Tiny Library, I could literally climb on the roof and then kind of see Tiny Library from, from the roof of Pinnacle about two miles away. We have seen decrease in door counts and circulation. And so I just kind of highlighted those for each month to give you guys an idea of how much it has decreased with us, a full-service branch being there. Service point questions, and that includes accountant reference questions and directional, just all of those questions we'd get at that desk has also increased from what we had at Silverstone, which was up fifty-five hundred. We're at eleven thousand now, so right around double. Room reservations, that was something we did not have at Silverstone. We didn't have any rooms to, to reserve out. So I've got just a, a district view as a percentage. We're getting right up there, close to what Cherry Lane does. Not quite, but, but close. And the next slide should be just Pinnacle. So we have had, and we did not start room reservations until November, so there was nothing in October on the books. And this also does not include March, so it's just those four months of November, December, January, February. We've had four hundred and thirty-one study room reservations, which is on average, three per day, three to four per day. It's quite full. We, the, the program room does not have quite as much because we book it all the time for our programs. So there's, it's just not available quite as much for the public, but we are seeing use when, when it's available. Twenty-four seven holds room, which is a new feature for the, the south side, slowly increasing as well. And again, that eleven for March is just for the first week, so if you multiply that out, it will be more each month as we go along. And then the fun stuff, the programs. We have held since September thirtieth, where we had our special storytime, we have held three hundred and twenty-six programs in less than six months, which is a huge number for, for the staff that we have. We had over eight thousand attendees to those programs, which averages just under four hundred per week attending programs. And those of you that have been on the south side, it is still quite desolate out there. Like it's, it's still under development, and so I'm impressed by these numbers being so prevalent that people are coming to our library in this new development. Some of the key outreach events that we've done, not exhausted by any means, this was just some highlights. My First Books, which is something that we do through ICFL. We go to developmental preschools and, and do storytimes and bring them books. We've had, and that's only during the school year, we've had four hundred interactions with students for that. Childcare centers, we do storytimes. I think four different childcare centers right now each month. We've done some school literacy nights. We just started kindergarten registration in March. And so we have one more site we're doing next week, so that's just from the two schools that we've served. Mary Mack Elementary STEM night was a huge night with over two hundred students. Santa Elementary trick-or-treat, just under five hundred students that we interacted with. So all of these are just huge interactions and ways that we can go out in the community and tell people about the services that we offer. So just some highlights. One of our programs, we had a costume parade with our storytime. Kids were able to come in with all of their Halloween costumes and we handed out candy along different stops in the library. So we had seventy people attend that. The baby rave, if you don't know what a baby rave is, we curated music that would not be hard for parents to listen to, that they could dance to, that was also kid-appropriate, and had parents come with their little babies, headlights and glow sticks and just a lot of fun dancing time with their toddlers and seventy-eight people. We had our holiday market, which was the storytime with Santa. Brighton actually partnered with us to bring storytime into the library with Santa. He stayed there for, I believe, two, three hours and participated in our program. We had activities, hot chocolate, just all kinds of things happening, and had two hundred and ten people attend that. And then there's some staff photos as well from staff having gone that day. Our STEM labs, our STEM labs have been very regularly attended. On average, thirty-plus people, sometimes forty. Today, I think we hit fifty. So we've just got some different ones. We've got seed starting classes and, and just all kinds of fun activities that we've been planning. Pokemon Club is also a very regular one that we, that just continues to grow. And one of our staff members that's running that now is now professor. So he has been, been anointed as a Pokemon professor as well. And then another fun one was Teens After Dark laser tag. Teens are notoriously difficult to get into the library. And so we've been trying some different avenues to do that, and this was one where we had thirty teens show up. So again, it, it seems like it's all just fun, but it's a way to get them introduced to the staff, get them in the library, familiar with us, and it was a huge hit. And then lastly, I will try not to be upset. If any of you are not familiar with Tells to Tells, it is a program nationwide. Goes by many names, sit-stay-read, read-to-rober, you name it. It's a way for kids to read to animals and it helps them with their literacy by reducing their anxiety, making it so that we're not judging them, you know, dogs don't judge. They just sit there and make them happy. We used to have the program at Silverstone with a, with a bearded dragon, not a dog. But when we got to Pinnacle, we were able to bring dogs in. So this is Friday. One of our very regulars, she came every week. And so I'll just kind of read what her mom sent us. She said, "I can't tell you how grateful and life-changing these past few months have been. We accomplished exactly what I set out to do, make her feel as special and loved as possible in the last years. We just didn't know how short that would be. She was an incredibly special girl, and your team always made her feel like it. The kids were everything to her, and I've never seen her so happy." And I will tell you, Friday made everyone happy. The kids would call, call on the phone and ask, "Is Friday going to be there?" She unfortunately have passed away. We had to stop, we had to cancel the programs in February, but just wanted to put that one up there, that she was definitely, even though it was a, a short time at Pinnacle, she was definitely a, an important one for all the kids. Any questions?
Dusty, thank you. Question for the trustee, from the trustees? This seems to be an example of if you build it, they will come.
It is, for sure.
That's great. I've got a couple of questions. Can you explain the holds room stat? Is that the number of people that use the twenty-four hour holds room?
Yes, the number of people that, each month that has used.
When the door, when the library is closed, it's the holds room. Okay, thank you. And just for the benefit of the public, do you mind explaining the difference between a program and outreach, please?
Yeah, so a program is anything that happens in the building. Outreach is outside of the building, external, within the community. So that's, that's the, the main difference in programs and outreach. I mean, outreach is still a program, but it's external.
And both of those numbers were quite high.
Quite high, yes. Staff who've been busy.
All right, so no other comments. Dusty, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Item number seven is we have a discussion and possible action item regarding the regular reading dates of the library. Or Nick, we'll turn it over to you to introduce this, please.
With the, the upcoming renovation of Cherry Lane, we obviously will not have this building to be able to do our board meetings at. And so the place where that is officially located in our documents is the regular reading dates that is set every June. And with the anticipated closure being in May, I wanted to get this in front of you so that we had time to notice the public and make the changes. While we don't have those dates set in stone yet, this is something that we're open to, to changing, obviously, but wanted to get this in front of you and have that as an action item and discussion sooner than later.
Can you speak a little bit to the tentative dates and sort of the possible shaping timelines, please?
Yes. So, right now, we are looking at beginning construction at the very beginning of July, which means that we need to have everything moved out of the building before that point in time. Because this building has been here for almost thirty years, there's a lot to move out. And we, we need to do it in the way that allows as many of the materials to be migrated into the other branches and into long-term storage. But we also have other things that aren't books, in furniture, equipment, things like that, that need to be moved out. Looking at the dates for summer reading, starting on May twenty-third. That is the last day for school. It was stated it's also the day of our summer reading kickoff at Suddler's Park. We're highlighting that as the tentative date to be the last day open. But until we have more concrete dates with construction, we're not locking that in. If that doesn't happen, looking at other possible dates, at which point we would then not be moving out of Cherry Lane at the end of May. It's possible we would be looking at August. But until I have construction permits and dates, we're moving forward with plans, but contingency plans as well. And so bringing this before you for this, so that we can properly plan this aspect for board meetings as part of the renovation.
Thanks, Nick. So, so just to be, make sure I've got this right, so we don't necessarily, we're not, we don't have to do this on April sixth. What's proposed tonight doesn't have to happen depending on the construction schedule?
Correct. It, we, we don't have to, we could have a motion tonight to amend what we've provided and have the meetings start in May. If, if we're continuing on the construction plan, I would advise not going any further than that, just to avoid interrupting the move-out plans and all of the packing and moving pieces and being able to give the public and staff proper notice. So we could amend the motion to only be May and June, but I, I would, would advise at this point in time, removing the May and June meetings from what we have listed, which is to move the meetings to Orchard Park.
Can you talk a little bit about the space in Orchard Park?
Yeah, so the, the biggest space that we have available that in the district outside of this room is the Orchard Park boardroom. And that would be the, the space that we would be moving this, these meetings to in the future, or will be moving these to in the future. So it's the, the room that has the, the best options for us outside of this room.
Can you estimate how many members of the public it would accommodate in person?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but if I were to guess, I would say we could do probably only the thirty.
Questions from the trustees? Josh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Nick, I, I think it's a good plan to, you know, kind of preemptively move our meetings to another location. Personally, I, you know, living in North Meridian, Orchard Park is great. But in the interest of fairness, I think it'd probably be worthwhile exploring an option of having maybe a couple in the north and a couple down at Pinnacle. We could probably forego having meetings at Tiny. But, you know, a little sharing of the wealth that's spread around, give people an opportunity to attend meetings if they're so inclined, or, it's not all about me, unfortunately, so. That, that's the only input that I have. Otherwise, I, I'm in full agreement with the plan before.
Josh, I'd say one challenge with moving venues is there's people that wouldn't know where are we going to be, where are we going to be tonight? Of course, they could look it up and see, or we'd have a sign at the door, but that might be a little bit of a contraband last year if they drove up to Orchard Park and it's down in Pinnacle.
Counterpoint, I'm pretty sure there's only one member of the public that attends every meeting, and she's pretty high speed. Counterpoint, I'm pretty sure there's only one member of the public that attends every meeting, and she's pretty high speed.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Laura, go ahead, please.
I, I agree with Trustee Cummings to an extent. I think it would be helpful to keep the, or, or have the April, May, and June meetings at Orchard Park. But then maybe have, you know, we, we look at the extent of our closure and have half those meetings at Pinnacle and half the meetings at Orchard Park. But not alternate back and forth. I think we need to have a chunk of meetings clearly scheduled at one location and then have a possible chunk of meetings scheduled at another location.
And if that were the case, just hypothetically speaking, that would be the next year, which is not even on the schedule. So that's not a decision we have to make tonight, but.
Right.
Dusty, any thoughts?
Mr. Chair, I think since we know that we're going to make this move to Orchard Park, we might as well go ahead and get started in April. And I think that, you know, we can consider anything further for the July meetings, but I think getting started in April makes sense.
Mr. Chair. Just a point of clarification. This would go through the June meeting, which is our, the board's annual meeting. And so the, the meetings would be set for July through June at the, the June meeting.
And so that would be the point, if we did want to change the venues or alternate or something, we could entertain those.
Correct. And in moving now, or whenever, if there's amendment to the motion to, you know, start in May, we'd have at least two meetings at Orchard Park to know how to set that for the, I guess, one, one meeting if we do it in May, two if we do it in April, to be able to prepare for what is proposed and adopted at the June meeting, so.
Further questions, comments? Okay, if not, I'd intercan the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dusty, go ahead, please.
I move to approve the remainder of the twenty-four, twenty-five regular meeting dates as originally presented, starting in Pinnacle.
And just for clarifications, that would be to move the location for April, May, and June meetings to.
To Orchard Park.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. Paul in favor?
Aye.
I, any votes? Motion carries. Just put a good signs on the line.
Paul, I will, we will have the seal helping, he's the in-house graphic designer at that building currently. He tells him to move some people around with us. Between him and Natalia, we'll, we'll have some good signs.
Or we can do the sprinter man and just drive them up.
We could, although the liability is high.
Don't do that. Item number eight on the agenda, Director's Updates. Nick, we'll turn it over to you, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will try and go through this kind of quicks, since we have, have quite a bit of stuff on our meeting tonight. But wanted to share a few things. I'll hand it over to the seal. He'll run through a few, and then I'll finish up with an update on the Cherry Lane renovation. So the foundation, the Reading Library Foundation, received a grant and then also supplemented that grant to provide some funding for after-school healthy snacks at the traditional branches. And so they got a fifteen-hundred-dollar grant and then donated five hundred each to Pinnacle and Orchard Park for those healthy after-school snack opportunities. As you can see in Dusty's presentation, we do have a lot of kids that come in, and this is a great way to have them stay and feel welcome and get everything out of being at that event without having to worry about being hungry. Onto the next, there's a quick volunteer update. So this, we're about halfway through the fiscal year, and we've had forty volunteers that have done over a thousand hours so far. This is all of our branches, but it does not yet include summer reading, which is when we will have a high number of volunteers that come in. That's when we get the younger volunteers. My highlight of volunteer year, just because that's where I got started yawns ago. And so I love seeing volunteers of all ages, and we, we are able to tap into their, their skills and provide additional services and, you know, the, the help that they provide staff is immense. And so just happy to see all the things that they're doing. With social media, just a quick snapshot of our follower count, the plus sign, green numbers there are how many new followers we had on Instagram and Facebook in the month of February. And the most viewed Instagram post is there with the Steelheads when they came and did a storytime here at Cherry Lane.
Thank you, Nick. Mr. Chair, trustees, I'd like to keep the ball rolling with all the fun stuff we're talking about as far as programs go and highlight some of the great programs we did around the district. Dusty already shared some with us, but I'd like to share some more. So the Steelheads was a big hit. This was in conjunction, in conjunction with Third Annual Winter Reading Program. We had over sixty-three people attend. In this very room, we had Baby Prong, which was more formal than the Baby Rave. So, you know, we still have balloons, decorations, sensory toys, and more, so child-friendly dance party. So that was a big hit. Hundred and nine people attended, parents and kids. So that was really cool. In our preschool storytimes, we brought some community heroes in the building. So Republic Services visited with a garbage truck, and, you know, kids and garbage trucks. I'm sure they were ecstatic. And the Meridian Police Department also attended, and kids got to see a police cruiser. So that, that was ninety attended for the garbage truck and a hundred and thirty-three for the police cruiser. So very cool events happening here at Cherry Lane, at Orchard Park. They did a Kickstarter garden where they have experts come and teach folks how to, about plants that grow in Idaho and how to prepare their gardens for our various seasons. We have a theater arts class for six-to-twelve-year-olds, which introduced skills in reading aloud, creating characters, storytelling, musical theater, choreography, and theater history. There was also a family trivia party where families enjoyed a challenging and friendly trivia competition. And a watercolor one-on-two class, so a little bit of something for everyone. Dusty already covered some of the Pinnacle stuff, but we also have four master gardeners in their STEAM lab from U of I who taught about seed-starting more, so really preparing people for spring last month. And lastly, Unbound Advanced CNC. We have a great volunteer Greg who's been teaching CNC classes there for a long time now. And we've gotten to the point where a lot of our students were asking for advanced classes. So anyone who's tried the CNC machine at Unbound knows that the learn curve is very steep. And the fact that we're doing advanced CNC classes shows commitment and that we're having great success with people wanting to come back and learn more about it. And it is tax season, so there was a class on taxes for small businesses. So Unbound is always trying to help aspiring business owners and entrepreneurs, so that happened as well. And Nick, you may have to help me with this slide, but as you see, number of programs, quite a bit, early learning. Oh, I can't see if it was attached to the last one. No, one ninety-four. So. There we go. I won't say all the numbers, but it looks like we're up in almost every category, okay, besides families and adults. So programs are on the rise. We're doing a great job around the district, and we're very proud of the very well-rounded curriculum and content we're providing. Any questions?
Questions from Nick or the seal?
I have one, one more that I'll go over.
Go ahead.
So on to the renovation piece.
Go ahead, please.
So this is just a very broad overview of what we're looking at with Cherry Lane renovations. So we've gone into bits and pieces of it, but wanted to create something that is very succinct on the, the process. So this, this one starts in the summer of twenty-three, but really this goes back many, many, many years. The voters approved the plant facility levy in twenty-nineteen, and as part of that, there were four projects, the biggest of which is the upcoming Cherry Lane renovation. Initially, it was planned to be the last project and kind of happened after the ten-year piece. But because of how we have been able to do everything, we're able to get this project as the last one, but not wait till the end of the, the ten years. And that's very advantageous because we frankly would not make it. The HVAC in this building would not make it that, that five years. We would have ended up having to replace this extremely old system into something that's not going to fit into the new system. And so rather than replacing it twice, it's great that we're able to do this all at once. We have done focus groups with the community, with staff. We've done, we talked about it in a work shop meeting, I think it was last year with the board, some aspects of it. We have Josh that is part of the liaison to the meetings that we have with the architects and engineers and all that. And so we've gone through the planning, we've completed the design. We did get the DD schematics back last week, I believe. And that is the final design piece. And so right now, we're, we're doing the bidding, or we'll be doing the bidding soon. We're doing the permits. That's kind of where we're at right now. We're, we've been promoting it, explaining it. We have talking points that are going to be going out tomorrow, I believe, for staff to be able to talk to the public about this. And we have a communication plan that officially will roll out with those talking points to allow the public to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and where we're at with the process. Like, as I said before, we have a lot of the milestones that we know are going to be happening, and we have pencil-in dates, but it's all a domino. You know, we have to get this one to be able to get to the next one. And so while we have those in pencil, we, we can't really ink them into place until each successive domino happens, as is the process of construction, especially renovations. So we're working on a webpage that will be launched by early April that has a lot of these details in them. We've been working with the staff to get all of that in place so that we can have one place to direct people that have questions and rolling out various ways to update the public on what we're doing as we go. As we talked about, you know, we'll close Cherry Lane either in May or soon thereafter. And it will go through the entire construction process. We're looking at opening in fiscal year twenty-seven. And we'll be providing blog updates on that website that I mentioned and also on social media posts. And then we'll be looking at that grand opening somewhere in, it says winter twenty-sixth. Be roughly, or I'm shooting, they're shooting to be done in, you know, the end of September, October. I haven't gone through this enough with these projects. My target goal is January twenty-seven. But again, this will be dependent on the construction piece. So we have a lot of pencil-in plans, but we'll take it as, as they come, as we go through the process, so. That was, and I just wanted to give a, a brief summary.
Thank you. Questions from trustees?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Chris, go ahead.
Nick, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I saw that the communications team is basically going to be hitting the ground and putting out a product. I thought it was March twenty-ninth is the date potentially or something for an initial release. Is that about right?
It'll be around there. It might, we might be a few days off of that, that date. We're probably looking early April rather than the twenty-ninth in terms of how we roll it out. We're, we'll be getting stuff from MSR about that time, but from what we roll out after that, it'll probably be about a week after that.
Okay. And who's the communications team lead on the staff side?
Depends on what we're talking about.
Interfaceing with the public, the release of information basically to the taxpayers.
Me, Andrew. When it's for the full face of it, it, it's me. But we have a team of people that are doing different aspects of it, so.
Seeing as how this is the final piece of that twenty-nineteen, gosh, I don't remember, levy or blog, whatever it was. Yeah, the levy, which is kind of, you know, this is, we're kind of coming full circle with it. I think it's probably worth connecting with Boise Dev, Donday, and his team as a good regional, local news authority for things that matter to the people in our community along with the next-door outlets. And those sorts of media blast opportunities to really highlight not just the Cherry Lane remodel, but also, you know, we got Orchard Park, we got Unbound, we got Pinnacle, this is where your tax dollars have gone. And it's a pretty good return on investment, as evidenced by the usage of.
Mr. Chair. Some of this will be in conjunction with the vehicle decal-ing that we're doing. The foundation provided funds for the home delivery vans to be outfitted with a wrap. And so that will be happening at the end of March, early April. And so I want to be able to parlay some of these things together in, in order to tell a complete story to the best of our ability.
Additional questions and comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Laura, go ahead.
The seal explained about CNC at Unbound. Can you explain, can you give us a little insight about what the CNC is?
Absolutely, Laura. Thank you. Let me look up what CNC stands for, because I always forget.
Computer.
Yeah.
No.
I had it. I always get the Indian stuff, sorry.
Something, something coding, computer sound coding. You mean numerical coding or?
Computer numerical control. So it's a, essentially a milling machine. So it has a drill bit, and using design software on the computer, basically controls the bit, which then mills, for lack of better terms. Primarily wood, but other mediums are acceptable as well.
Thank you. I was able to tour Unbound last month, and it was amazing.
Yes, it is.
So the, the CNC, the reason we, we got it when we did in twenty-fifteen was to have the opposite essentially of 3D printing when it comes to manufacturing. So 3D printing is an additive manufacturing process, whereas CNC is a subtractive manufacturing process. So you start with a solid object and you carve out to get to your final design, whereas 3D printing, you start with nothing and you build it up. So different ways to get to sometimes the same or similar products, but different methods. Because like, as you said, we have wood, but you can use modeling wax, you can use aluminum, things like that, acrylic, acrylic's really good.
I've got a question on Cherry Lane. So renovation timeline. So really, the variable now is permitting and start date of construction. And so.
Permitting and, and then from there, it'll be the bidding with, with going through that process. And when those subcontractors are able to get started and what they come back with and all of that. But yes, that, that's, that's the phase that we're in currently.
And still somewhat murky as far as.
I would say it's, it's moving along as it's intended, but in case there's any hiccups, I just wanted to. We don't have any reason to believe that there will be, but just wanted to provide with the context that nothing's locked into place yet. We're still going through the process.
And is there any reason why we can't wait until the next month? No decisions will need to be made on closure date until the next fourth of June?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other additional questions or discussion on the Director's Update, we'll move on to item number nine, which is the job description. This is an action item contained in our packet tonight. Nick will let you give us a quick overview of this item, please. Nick will let you give us a quick overview of this item, please.
All right, Mr. Chair. The executive manager position is being updated. It goes beyond where we put items in the consent agenda with minor edits, mainly due to this being the position that absorbed a lot of the assistant director of operations positions formally when we archived that last month. And so this is in conjunction with the actions that the board took last month. And so just doing a little bit of cleanup, but it went beyond the standard cleanup and just had.
Here.
To have a formally go through.
So relatively minor changes, but still more than a punctuation, punctuation or storm changes?
Correct.
Questions from the trustees or further discussion? If not, I didn't take a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Josh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the executive manager job description as presented.
I second.
Thanks, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, this is one, two, three, four, five different action items, six. Six. Some policy reviews. Nick, let's go ahead and go ahead and explain all six of them. Take as much time as you need and take five of them, there are five? Five, you're right, sorry. Okay, there's only five. Take as much time as you need to explain the five of them and then we will do action items one by one.
All right, Mr. Chair. I will not talk about them in order, just because it'll be a little easier to unpack. So privacy and confidentiality and the volunteers are on their annual trip through the board. And so there is enough changes here that weren't coming in, but nothing overly substantial with those. More just kind of getting them in line with how our policies are and getting them, keeping them up to date with where we need to be as a district. The other three, start, starting with the interlibrary loan policy and then tangentially the display and exhibit and the service charge policy stem from the fact that we will not be doing home delivery. I saw it on something. We will not be doing interlibrary loan services with the service that we are currently using, which is OCLC. That is a service that we participate in through share item and the prices on that have doubled. And so going forward, the Link's Consortium will not be using the OCLC platform. And so that is, a piece of that is where we have interlibrary loans. Interlibrary loans are items that we retrieve or send out to, to or from libraries outside of our area. So interlibrary loans do not include couriered items from the 11 Link's libraries. So from Caldwell to Plutfalls, the 11 of us libraries share materials through our courier system. This is not that. These are, you know, a book that might come from Salt Lake City or a CD that might be in Montana. Or we might send a book to Denver as part of that process. And the cost for this is really high. I think we were paying about, I think seventeen thousand for this, but it, that does not include just interlibrary loan. It's also the backend cataloging aspect. And so there's software that you need to have in order to put new items into a collection. That is the bulk of what that fund goes to. The service that the Link's libraries will be moving to does not have an interlibrary loan component to it. And so by moving to that new service, we don't have the additional piece of the interlibrary loan. To do it as a standalone, we're at least $10,000 in, on top of what we'll be paying for the cataloging service component of the new service we're moving to. And so, and we have some other pretty big drawbacks, limitations. And so the reason I say all of that is if we get rid of the interlibrary loan, the other two policies have to go in conjunction with it because they are referenced. Interlibrary loan is referenced in those, and so. I think I hit all of the points. Looking my team for confirmation, but I think I hit all of the points on major ones of this.
Questions from trustees? So will interlibrary loan change the, the impetus for that was the Link's Consortium deciding that that wasn't a viable service to continue? And so the option was we can do it standalone at a much higher price or go along with the rest of the consortium?
Correct.
Are there, for just the benefit of patrons, are there other options for interlibrary loans in the balance?
So, yes, kind of. There are other services. There might be some Link's libraries that continue to do it. I'm not positive on all of them. I know quite a few have, are moving to this also in terms of not offering it as a service. But the numbers are really, cost per transaction is pretty substantial.
I'm thinking university libraries, like you have a community card?
Yes, I heard mixed things on the ability for a community card at the universities and public colleges to use the ILL. You can get a community card and use their materials there. But interlibrary loan, I've heard mixed things. I don't believe they're able to do interlibrary loan with that. However, we do have a request for purchase. And if there are items that fit our collection development policy and more importantly are available to purchase, we will consider adding those. As you saw, Jenny's team adds thousands of items every month. And, you know, if it, if it meets the collection development policy and is available, not through like eBay, but as through a publisher, you know, we'll add it to our collection if we can. We'll add it where we can, you know, print or digital. But the interlibrary loan piece is kind of difficult. We're, I think, we did the math on it earlier. Out of the items, I think there was like a thousand items or two, was it 2,000 items?
About a thousand in the past year.
A thousand in the past year. When we look at, we have over 200,000 items in our collection. You know, we're looking at a very miniscule number of items that we're looking at. We do have a lot of power users of it, so we'll be in communication with them and we'll have this on our website. So we all pass this to be able to communicate this out. And it'll allow us to not move some of the processing pieces into the new material services office when they move out of the annex. And two clarifications. One is the interlibrary loan policy is not to be updated, it will be archived. So if we do want to bring it back in the future, we could bring it back without having to rewrite the whole thing, which will save a bit a lot of time. And then the display and exhibit policy was not on there for the ILL reason. That was my mistake.
Do we need to have the discussion on the delay or the display and exhibit just policy? I don't know.
I think there was some. There is a language piece that we just had to clarify in there with the section at the bottom of that policy.
So if we were to do an action item on the interlibrary loan policy, the action would be to archive the policy?
Correct.
All right, so let's do these, if we're ready, let's do these one by one. And I would entertain motions from whoever would like to charge through the list.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I move to archive the interlibrary loan policy.
Certainly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that. Item A, the interlibrary loan policy archive. For the questions, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the changes to the privacy and confidentiality policy.
Certainly.
Thank you, we have an action item and a motion and a second on the privacy and confidentiality policy. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Up next is the volunteers.
I move to approve the volunteer policy as presented.
Certainly.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second on the volunteer policy approval. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
We are addressing the display and exhibit policy.
Yes, it's Chris.
Making the change.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I move to approve the display and exhibit policy as presented.
Certainly.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second for the discussion on the display and exhibit policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One more.
I move to approve the service charge policy as presented.
Certainly.
Thank you. For the questions on that one?
Mr. Chair?
Please, Josh.
Just to clarify on this one, I think there was a call out about a USB drive or something that potentially was going to be stricken from the as presented clean copy. Has that been resolved?
I'm looking to the staff, because we had the conversation. The question about the USB drive was, are we actually?
The $10?
Are we actually selling them? Because if we're not, then we might as well just take it off. And so I believe that, who pointed up, because we went back and forth on this a few times.
And I apologize if I wasn't looking at the clean copy.
No, no, you're good. We had to back and forth on that. I think that was, that can be a discussion, because it is just, right now, we don't have a recommendation to take it out. There was a comment that got left in, and so.
Is this a thumb drive type thing or an SD card?
It's SD, SD card or a thumb drive.
I figure it's only an Unbound. And it is a service that is being used or has been used?
I will defer to the seal on this one.
Mr. Chair, trustees, yes, it is only a service at Unbound right now, something we offer. A lot of folks who use our equipment need flash drives, and this was a way to provide them to our patrons. Additionally, when people use the Sound Studio upstairs, we have micro SD cards. A lot of folks who want to use the Sound Studio and take their recordings home with them do not come with a micro SD card. That is not something we could loan out. So when I was branch manager there, we made the recommendation to add those to our service charge policy so we could have the ability to sell them to patrons who want to use them.
And given that information, I'm going to assume that as the price of technology has gone down, this $10 is a nominal charge and is appropriate for the size of the capability of the storage media?
Yes, it is.
And the public is happy with that?
Yeah, there's a, there's seldom purchased, but it's a good option to have.
And it's not consuming a ton of resources to keep a stockpile of?
Not at all.
Okay, excellent.
I would say with the ones that we have in stock, those are the price point that we purchased of that. So I would say even if they have gone down on the marketplace, we, to recoup the cost that we have, that's it. Until we, until we run out of ones, I think that would be the recommendation.
Fair enough.
So just to clarify, no change to that piece of this policy?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, I would entertain a motion on the service charge policy. Have we already, you're ahead, sorry. Excuse us, we did have a motion, we did have a second. Oh, of course. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is item number 11. We have three items that have come before the board for a request for reconsideration of materials in the library. I hope you will pardon me for reading a lot of this, some of it I covered last month, but it is an important discussion and I want to make sure that I cover some of the details so that people that may be new to these issues understand where the board is coming from and also how it impacts the public as well. So tonight, we have three books that are under request for reconsideration. We will, let me give you the three titles first and then we'll talk about each one of those in turn. The first one is a book entitled Pride 123 by Michael Dueston. This book is currently shelved in the Cherry Lane children's area. It was requested to move out of the children's area, but no other destination was specified by the requister in the request. The second title is a book called Let's Talk About It: The Teen's Guide to Sex, Relationships, and Being a Human by the author Erica Mon. This book is shelved in the Cherry Lane branch, the Orchard Park branch, and the Pinnacle branches teens area. Copyright 2021. The request here was the title be moved to the adult section of the library. The third book we'll consider tonight for reconsideration is a book called Two Boys Kissing by the author David Leithin. This book is in the Cherry Lane teens area, copyright 2013. And the request here is that the title be moved to the adult section of the library. So for context, the Meridian Library District has a collection development policy approved by the board and posted on our website. Collection simply means books in the library in general terms. So a collection development policy says, here are the guidelines for purchasing the items that people can check out. The collection development policy also guides the selection of materials that are removed from the library's collection. The Meridian Library staff and board and trustees adhere to the collection development policy. It's reviewed regularly and revised as needed, including recent additions last year after passage of the Children's School and Library Protection Act, which is sometimes referred to as HV 710. Part of the provisions of that law include steps that patrons can take should they find material in the collection that they believe is in violation of Idaho law. So we have over 200,000 books in our collection, over two, we have 2,000, 200,000 print items in our collection, not including eBooks. And in most months, we purchase around 3,000 additional items. District policies and state law, in the case of requests stemming from the Children's School and Library Protection Act, require transparency in reviewing requests for reconsideration. The procedures for following the request are on our webpage. Patrons can print the form there or pick up a copy from a staff member at any branch library. The form itself is a two-part form. Part one is essentially what we've always had in the district, an opportunity for a patron to ask for a book to be moved or removed for any reason not covered by the Children's School and Library Protection Act. Section two of the form is to cover the points specifically covered by the act. Once a request for reconsideration is received, it becomes part of the public record. Submitters acknowledge they understand it will become a public record as part of the form they sign. A copy of the submitted request is linked to on our website. You can see tonight's submitted forms on the website if you want. As the steps unfold, the library's formal review will also be posted there along with any decisions on the matter rendered by the board. Now, the timeline for that is after the next meetings, after these meetings are approved next month, then those materials will be posted at that location. So as mentioned a few minutes ago, we have three items tonight in these requests for reconsideration. Quoting from our policy page, the burden is on the censer to prove that specific material meets the definition of, quote, "material harmful to minors." The board will fairly and partially adjudicate claims that materials in the collection meet the statutory definition of material harmful to minors, but will apply the statutory definition closely to ensure access to protected speech is not illegitimately restricted. Adequate procedural safeguards, including judicial determinations, are necessary to ensure protected speech is not infringed. So here are the steps that were followed. To adjudicate these claims, the request was first reviewed by senior library staff. A written report and recommended action was prepared by the library director. That report is in the trustees' information packets distributed in preparation for this meeting. Copies of the book were also made available to trustees should they wish to review those books. The person making the request tonight will be notified of any actions taken by the board on the matter as soon as is reasonably possible. Our decision also becomes part of the public record. So thanks for listening to that. So the first title under consideration is the book Pride 123 by Michael Dueston. As I mentioned before, it's in the Cherry Lane Children's area, and the request is that it be moved out of the children's area, but no other, no destination is specified by the person requesting the move. Our options as a board can be several different options. We can adopt the library's, sorry, I should say here, the recommendation from the director's written response is that Pride 123 remain in the collection and also remain shelved in the children's section. The board can adopt the library director's written response and recommend this, recommended decision as our own, with or without modification, or we can issue our own decision. The question before trustees tonight is, in simple terms, does this book rise to the level of harmful to minors as intended by Idaho statute 1518-1517B? To meet that standard, the book would have to meet each of the following three criteria as outlined in the aforementioned Idaho law and the U.S. Supreme Court. This is the criteria we are called to apply tonight. Material will be classified as being harmful to minors when it, one, depicts or describes representations or depictions of nudity, sexual conduct, sexual excitement, or sadomasochistic abuse, which are patently offensive to prevailing standards in the adult community with respect to what is suitable material for minors. Number two, when considered as a whole, appeals to the purient interest of minors as judged by the average person applying contemporary community standards. And number three, when considered as a whole and in the context in which it is used, does not possess serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for minors based on a national standard. So at the conclusion of our discussion for each of these books tonight, a possible wording of motions can be as simple as moving to follow the patrons' request that the book be re-shelved, or moving to concur with the library director's written recommendation, or some other action we are choosing. So thanks for listening to the preamble, and I'll open it up now to questions and discussions from the trustees. So let's just take Pride 123 at this point in time, and we'll do the other books in order. There's no minimum or maximum time required to discuss this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Destiny, please go ahead.
While some of the other books we've been asked to look at may include, may have some merit for conversation, this one very clearly, in my opinion, doesn't meet any of the requirements to be considered harmful to minors. So to me, this is an easy, an easy recommendation, or an easy motion to approve, the recommendation to keep the book where it is.
Second.
So, I'm sorry, do we have, let's, that wasn't necessarily?
I know, it was a motion to, okay, having said that, I will formally move to approve and endorse Director Grove's written response to the request for reconsideration.
I second.
Of Pride 123.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. We will do this as a roll call vote by name then. The motion is to, for the, yes, the motion is to concur with the library director's written recommendation. Trustee Cummings?
Yes.
Trustee Hart?
Yes.
Trustee Knutson?
Yes.
And I, Trustee Kohler also vote yes, motion carries. I will notify the requestor of our decision in writing, and if the requestor disagrees with the decision and wishes to pursue it further, the next steps are outlined in Idaho law. The next title under request for reconsideration is Let's Talk About It: The Teen's Guide to Sex, Relationships, and Being a Human by Erica Mohn. This book is in Cherry Lane Orchard Park and Pinnacle Library's teens area. Copyright is 2021. It was requested that this title be moved to the adult section of the library. I will note, too, that this book has been checked out twice this year. Last year, it was checked out 19 times, and since it was added to the collection, the book has been checked out 46 times. With that, we would ask for any questions from, or discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee Hart?
Let's Talk About It is a book that is intended to educate teens on their bodies and sexuality. While it is true that it includes nudity, depictions of sexual conduct, depictions of sex or sexual excitement, it does not meet the definition of harmful to minors in other ways. It doesn't appeal to the purient interest of minors as judged by the average person. The depictions are not patently offensive to prevailing standards in the adult community with respect to what is suitable material for minors. And this book does possess value, scientific or educational value, to teenagers. I understand that for individual families, this might not be suitable for their children, but we're not here to impose our own family values on the rest of the community. And I think that that's an important distinction that needs to be made when looking at this book. I have four children that range in age from six to 14. There are parts of this book?
Folks, if you could keep the comments to yourself, please, that'd be appreciated.
There are parts of this book that I would feel very comfortable showing my 14-year-old, partially because if I am talking with her, parenting her for body changes, or talks about sexuality, I would much rather her look at the cartoon versions than trying to find something on the internet that's suitable for her to look at so that we can have that conversation. So this book has been useful to me and my parenting in that way. I think that it has a lot of value educationally. I think that it's clear that it doesn't align with everybody's values where it comes to bodies or sexuality, and that's okay. I think that we, we should encourage diversity in our education and allow for folks to educate their children in the way that they feel is most appropriate for their families. And so I think part of doing that is making sure that a wide variety of materials are available. And I think that it is common in our community that folks want to have those, those materials available to them should they choose to use them.
Thank you, Destiny. I think you raise a good point, too, that in this book and in other books that may, may come before us in the future, our action does not say that this book fits our family values. There are many books in this library that are not suitable for my family values, that I would not choose to read, nor would I want my children to read when they were still living at home. That being said, that's not what we're called to decide tonight, and what may be valuable for me or not appropriate for me and my family, others may feel differently. And as a government institution, it's not our job to censor what other people get to choose for their families.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Laura. Go ahead, please.
I move that we approve the director's report and recommendation for Let's Talk About It.
And just to clarify, so that recommendation is that the light, that the title remain in the collection and remain in the teens area of the branches in which it resides?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I could be mistaken, but I believe the director's recommendation was to relocate this item from the teen section to the teen graphic novel section.
Thank you, I should have had it up on my screen here, I forgot about that. So let's, let's talk about that real quick. Nick, can you just give us a quick overview of that, please?
Correct. This is an item that is located in the teen nonfiction collection. Due to the, when this was purchased, it wasn't included with the graphic novel nonfiction section in the teen collection, with changes that have happened to the collection over the years. It thus aligns now with the teen graphic novel nonfiction section, and not just the teen nonfiction section.
Same room, different shelf?
Yeah, the same, same collection, so rooms.
Rooms, right, really, rooms different in different branches. So keep talking.
Yeah, same, same audience, just being more consistent with where it fits in the collection in terms of what is it, being a graphic novel, having to go and be in the teen graphic novel nonfiction section.
Thank you. Josh, thanks, I'll catch you there.
And, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
If I may, as a father of two daughters, aged 14 and 17, I am in wholehearted agreement that there are other resources available to other families, and what I choose to allow my family to use may or may not align with what others choose. But at the end of the day, if this library were to be a warehouse of books that did not offend anyone, it would be empty. And as a government institution, as you mentioned, I'm very happy to stand for reelection in 2027. If anyone disagrees, they are more than welcome to throw their hat in the ring and become involved in a very meaningful way in the development of policy and execution here in the library. So having said all that, I believe Trustee Knutson has amended motion. Like second, in a minute or a half.
By order, I don't believe there was an amended motion. I think there was a clarification that the motion was to approve the demo as presented.
Yeah.
Second.
Right. Laura, does that, Laura, does that, Jacob, what your intent is?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to follow the director's recommendation for this title as outlined in our packet and with his written report, and we have a second from trustee Cummings. Correct?
Yes.
Further discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Nick, I would just, a comment that I appreciate your thoughtfulness in recommending to move the book to the graphic novel nonfiction section. I think that's a better placement, and I think it also communicates that this is intended to be an educational and teaching and scientific tool, rather than entertainment necessarily.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, we will also do this as a roll call vote by name. Trustee Cummings?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
And I, Trustee Kohler also vote aye. Motion carries. The next title for reconsideration is Two Boys Kissing by David Levithin. This book is in the Cherry Lane collection, it's shelved in the teen section of that collection, copyright 2013. The request here is to move the title to the adult section of the library. Has some other notes here, so this book, as I mentioned, is copyright 2013, so 12 years ago it was published. Current year's statistics on circulation were two checkouts this year to date. Last year was not checked out, however, its lifetime circulation was 49 checkouts. So with that introduction, any questions, comments, or discussion on this title?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Again, though this book does have sexual references, it talks about sexuality, nudity, and uses rough language, it's, we're considering the work as a whole, we're not considering individual passages. Now, if you saw those words float now without context in the middle of nowhere, you might consider that inappropriate for minors, right? But, but we're considering this book in its entire context. So I just want to make that clear as we go forward and consider, and as we anticipate more of these reconsideration requests.
Thank you. And I didn't know, but I should have, that the director's written recommendation was that the title remain in the collection and remain shelved in the teen area of the library. Additional discussions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I move to approve Director Grove's recommendation to keep the book in the collection, in the children's section, or teen section.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Further discussion? All right. We will also do this as a roll call vote. Trustee Cummings?
Yes.
Trustee, Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Knutson?
Yes.
And I, Trustee Kohler also vote yes, motion carries.
You guys have all lost your moral compass, and each of you should be ashamed of yourself, and I'll lift you up in prayer. Shame on you. Shame, shame.
As I mentioned before, if the requestor disagrees with the findings of the board or the decision of the board, the next steps are outlined in Idaho law. That brings us to item number 12, future agenda items, items for our next meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Laura.
In light of the information that Destiny shared with us about Pinnacle and the impact it's having on the tiny location, I'd like to, not right away, but watch some trends and then revisit Tiny probably about August, September. And I'm curious about, like, is it, is it, this breaks my heart to say it like this, but my wonder is, is it worth the staff to keep it open if we're not getting enough visits? And that's really the question I'm, I'm wondering.
Yeah, I think that's good, and I do think that, sorry, go ahead, please.
And if it's not, is there, is there another option, especially, given it somewhat? Flexible ability to?
The door to the left is open.
I don't, I don't know about it. But I think it's, and we do need to look at that.
Yeah, and there may be some options, too, with the Cherry Lane closure, that may make some other options available. So I think that's a good item. We'll have some policies as part of our regular meeting?
And Mr. Chair, we, we are looking at Tiny Library. We, I would assume that we would love to have that in front of you before August, based on how things are trending currently, with some options, but at this time, still looking at what those options might be.
Great, thank you. I'm sure we'll have some Cherry Lane updates to talk about. Any additional agenda items? Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:30. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.